Okay, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Good evening, everyone. Oh.
Good evening. Good evening.
Let me, um. Let me make sure the councilman is.
I'm here.
Okay, so. Councilperson Sharif, are you?
I'm here. Oh.
Okay.
I'm working. Yes.
Madam Clerk?
I am here. Are we ready?
Yep.
Councilperson Chambers, if you can call the meeting to order.
I'm here, I'm sorry. I was muted, I apologize.
Councilperson Chambers?
Okay. Yes?
Can you call the meeting to order?
Oh, I'm sorry, Madam City Clerk, I've never done that before, would please guide me in that direction.
It's now time for the Compton City Council.
Okay. It's now time for the Compton City Council meeting, it is 5:27, may we have a motion?
On roll call, councilperson Galvane?
Present.
McCoy?
Here.
Sharif?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Chambers?
Here.
May we now have a motion to go, we're going to closed session already, city clerk?
Uh, city attorney.
You want to do your public comments?
I have no comments on the closed session, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk and Mayor Pro Tem Chambers, members of the city council. There are four items on this evening's closed session agenda. Conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Bruton versus City of Compton, LA Superior Court case number 19 STCV 45154. Madison versus City of Compton, workers' compensation claim number WC 0000134A. Bradford versus City of Compton, Los Angeles Superior Court case numbers TC 026769 and 18 STCV 01367 pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957.9 subdivision A. And the last item is conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation, potential case pursuant to subdivision C of Government Code Section 54956.9.
Evening, everyone, and please forgive my tardiness from the bottom of my heart.
May we have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Okay. Thank you, we will return after our items are considered.
On the roll call, councilperson Chambers?
I'm sorry, yes.
Galvane? Galvane?
Yes, yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes, thank you.
Everyone is with us, may we have a motion to reconvene the Compton City Council meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilperson Chambers?
Yes.
Galvane?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes. We'll now have a report out of closed session from our city attorney, Damon Brown.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This evening, we had four items on the closed session agenda. Conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Bruton versus City of Compton, Los Angeles Superior Court case number 19 STCV 45154. Madison versus City of Compton, workers' comp claim WC 0000134A. Bradford versus City of Compton, Los Angeles Superior Court case numbers TC 026769 and 18 STCV 01367 pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957.9A. And the last item was conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation, one potential case pursuant to subdivision C of Government Code Section 54956.9. There's nothing to report out at this time.
Thank you, City Attorney, for that proceeding forward to a night's agenda, excuse me, tonight's agenda, Madam City Clerk?
We're at introduction of special guests, I'm not sure if they're available.
I believe I saw two panelists on the line from California Policy Solutions. Mr. Khalif Asagai and also Mr. Mayo Asagai here with us to provide a state annual legislative report. Who also represent the city of Compton as our state lobbyists, and we look forward to hearing their presentation on this evening. You are muted, Mr. Asagai, and I am sending a message to unmute.
Right, and Ms. Asagai?
Wonderful. Yes. I would just extend the floor to our city manager, Mr. City Manager Cornwell, if you'd like to give also an additional introduction, feel free.
Yes, I just want to take a moment to say how much I appreciate the help that California Policy Solutions have given to us this fiscal year. And beyond, we all know Mr. Asagai goes very far back with Compton. And we're off to a great start with this, with this contract, and the communication is flowing very well. And I think council will be able to tell the difference moving forward on being able to meet your legislative ideas. For this, for this fiscal year, so I'll give the floor. I don't know which Asagai I should yield to. I think, right, I think I'll start with, with Mr. Mayo Asagai, you have the floor.
Thank you, city manager. Welcome, Mayo and Khalif, and I see Mayo getting tuned up. Are you able to hear us, Mayo?
He probably has his.
We can't hear you, you are unmuted, but you may need to turn the volume up on your device, that may provide you with some more volume. And if that doesn't work, I recommend just leaving and coming back in, sometimes the audio is not connected properly upon entering the zone. And while he works that out, I will also just share that Mr. Asagai also led the city's efforts in 2015 to actually restore several million dollars to our pension fund. There was a levy and an effort that Compton led with Mr. Asagai's leadership as well, in collaboration with several other cities. And we were able to be successful in having the state redirect and restore our pension funds that were formerly redirected as a result of the redevelopment agency dissolution. So the Asagai team has been serving the city of Compton for many years and also has provided some wonderful tangible results. So we look forward to a continued relationship that's fruitful for the residents of Compton. Thank you all for being with us. Mayo, we still are unable to hear you, unfortunately.
Unfortunately, senior Mr. Asagai is unable to get on the audio, so he's going to sign off now and sign back on, he will have some contributions to make. So Dad, you can go ahead and sign off and then sign back on to the meeting, and that should hopefully fix the audio. And honorable mayor, members of the council, my name is Khalif Asagai with California Policy Solutions. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening, and to present to you our annual legislative report and also our legislative engagement strategy for the 2020, 2020, 2021 legislative session. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here and dive into that presentation. Start, alright, can everybody see the screen?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, so just to start off, we wanted to say thank you. Thank you for selecting us to work with this, with your city. My dad has a lot of experience working with the city, we're very happy to bring you back and to be able to work with you under this new, under this new contract, so we're very grateful for that opportunity. Last year, last year in the California Legislature, I'm having some issues controlling my screen here, oh, there we go. So last year in the California Legislature, sorry, so we wanted to go over briefly the legislative process timeline and overview, just so everybody has an understanding of exactly what goes on in the legislature. We know that most of you had this experience, but I just want to run through it really quickly so that we're all on the same page about where we are now and the opportunities that we have to move forward in the future. So as of right now, we're in the legislative recess, legislative break, and pretty soon, starting in December, the new legislative session will begin, and that's when legislation can begin to be introduced. So very soon here, we'll be able to see what bills are coming out, and they're generally slowly introduced in December, and then a little bit more introduction in January. And then here at the bill introduction deadline, that's when most of the bills are put forth. So there'll be a trickle and then a flood towards the end, and we'll be able to see what bills have been introduced for the year. And first, I'm going to go to the top line, which is the legislative, which is for policy bills, then I'll go to the bottom line, which is for budget. And so in March, we have our first policy hearing, so that's when we'll be able to start submitting letters of support for bills, taking positions and doing testimony and that kind of thing. By June, we are going to the second house, where if bills are passed out of the Policy and Fiscal Committee in the first house, which is the Assembly of the Senate, then they will be heard on the Senate or Assembly floor, then move into the second house. And in July, there's a recess, and also a deadline again for policy bills is going to happen in August, and at the end of the year, in September, the session will end, and governor will have the opportunity to sign or veto that legislation by usually late, mid to late October. And for the budget process, along the bottom line, the budget is introduced in January, January 10th of every year, and must be signed by June. So throughout these opportunities, there, throughout this timeline, there are many opportunities to engage in legislative process, and we're going to talk today about what those opportunities. So briefly, to go over what happened last year, we, the governor, or excuse me, legislature introduced over 4,800 bills in the legislature. 445 of those bills made it to the governor's desk and were signed by the governor. And we tracked bills in the following areas, municipal development and transportation, housing homelessness and police accountability, which means that we were paying attention to numerous bills in each of these areas that would impact the city. Of the 60 bills that we tracked, 34 bills made it to the governor's desk, 24 were signed. So as we started in about July, we were able to pick up all the bills that hadn't been, that had, that were still active in the legislature, and follow those for the city, keep you abreast of what was happening there from that point on until they got to the governor. So some key legislation that was signed, which is all referenced in the report that was delivered to the mayor and all of the council members, is SB 288. is SB two eighty-eight, which is sequel exemptions for transportation-related projects. And again, these bills are in the report that was distributed to you. And then SB nine seventy-four with respect to disadvantaged community water systems and sequel exemptions, which is important for the city. And then with respect to police accountability, we had AB eleven eighty-five, which deals with supervision of sheriff's departments. So this will hopefully give us some guidance on how to improve relations and oversight with the LA County Sheriff. And then AB eleven ninety-six, which spans use of chokeholds by our localist woman, Assemblywoman Mike Gibson. And then AB thirty-seventy by Assemblywoman Weber from San Diego, which basically addresses the racial use of peremptory challenges in jury trials. So while that's not a police accountability bill, it is a racial accountability bill ensuring that there is equity in the justice system through rooting out racial bias in jury selection. So what we'd like to talk about now is our proposed legislative engagement strategy. So we want to share with you our goal, how we review and prioritize legislation, propose a tiered support system for the council and the mayor, and also discuss with you how we can engage in budget opportunities throughout the next legislative session. So our goal is basically to create a streamlined and efficient process to make sure that the city is engaged at critical junctures throughout the legislative process. There's a lot of activity happening in the legislature and trying to keep up too much on it when you're already in the process of legislating for your city can be daunting. That's what we're here for. And so we just want to make sure that you have an easy way to make an impact when it really matters. Second is to provide recommendations to the council and to the mayor on positions that should be taken and actions that should be taken in support of or in opposition to legislation that is heard for the legislation. And lastly, we want to require minimal time from mayor and council and matters that are not of urgent importance. You have a lot of work to do in managing the city. We are here to manage your legislation. And so the process that we're going to present to you today is meant to save you as much time as possible, but allow you to have the greatest impact on policy through our firm, California Policy Solutions. So the first thing is legislative review and prioritization. And this gives you an idea of what we do and what we'll be doing to make sure the city is on top of all the various issues that will come, be presented in legislature this year. So we will review every piece of legislation, either personally or through our automated system, to make sure that we pick up every single bill that is related to the city and the city's interest and the interest of its constituents. We will flag and track all legislation that impacts the city. So there will probably be hundreds of bills that may have some impact on the city, starting in January when they start to be introduced. So we'll make sure that the city is aware of every single bill that might have an impact. And then lastly, we'll recommend support for opposed positions and a level of support for each piece of legislation. And so there'll be some bills that will come up that might impact the city, but it won't make sense to engage with. There'll be others that are critically important that we need to have a high level of engagement with. And that's why we're proposing a, that we adopt resolutions for all those bills that are of the highest importance to the city. So we are suggesting that the city go with a tiered support system, and what that means is that we focus our resources on the most important bills while engaging all legislation at some level that impacts the city. We would organize legislation to the three priority areas that we discussed in the previous session, which are municipal development and transportation, homelessness and housing, and police reform. And this is all flexible based on, you know, our understanding of the city and the city's priorities, based on our conversations with the mayor and council, city manager, et cetera. And we can add additional categories to this as needed. Lastly, after we review and analyze our legislation, we will basically recommend different levels of engagement and support for the bills that are being heard for the legislature. And again, this is informal and flexible. We want to provide a framework for the city to understand how we'll be devoting our time and for the city to direct us in the devotion of that time to the issues that are of most importance that would give the greatest impact to the city's investment in us and in legislative process. So we're suggesting three tiers, and the first tier is our top priority legislation. This is legislation that's critically important to the city, where your engagement will produce substantial results. And what that means is there's a lot of legislation that's introduced that will have an impact on the city, but us investing our time in that may not be the best use of resources. There may be several sponsors, several organizations supporting it. There might be so much activity happening around the bill that our investment of our time won't make a huge difference in the outcome of that bill. Whereas there will be other bills, specifically maybe bills that only deal with contract cities or bills similar to McCarty's eleven eighty-six that deal with sheriff's organizations that may not have a lot of city support and may not have a large enough coalition. And so on those bills, we can make a tremendous impact by bringing the city's name and our advocacy efforts to the support of that legislation. And what that would mean is that we would engage at all levels on these bills, which would mean that we would have resolutions and support, that Mr. Asagai would testify at all hearings. We'd make lobby visits and phone calls and basically participate in every level of advocacy for this bill. We would be in communication with the author's office. They would know that they could rely on us to take up some of the work that would be necessary to pass this bill. So essentially, it would be taking on this bill as a top priority for the city. The second tier is just support legislation, which is what we've generally done in the past, which is just submitting some letters of support based on the resolutions passed by the city. This can be done for an unlimited number of bills. We know there's limited resources to invest time in this, but that's something that we can do on any bill. And also, we can provide support on those bills, but we would not have as high a level of engagement, because these are the bills where our advocacy efforts may not make a difference in the outcome because of the substantial support that already exists for those measures. And then the last tier is just general tracking bills, bills that we'll keep an eye on. Those are bills that, you know, will impact the city, may impact the city, but they don't rise to a level of requiring action from the city and the use of its resources. So that's the suggestion to how we do that. And then on legislation that we would oppose, basically any bill that comes up that might hurt the city in any way, or I should say, hurt an industry that supports the city, we would want to take an interest in stopping that. And generally, those bills would rise to a high level of priority because they might do something, again, to negatively impact the city. And we can move through these tiers or have different levels of support without any official action. It's really just having engagement from the mayor and council around what the priorities are. And if you see something that is, you know, really important, we will bring it to your attention and make sure that you take action on it. Again, then we have the budget opportunities here. And basically, there are two ways to make policy in the California Legislature. It's through the policymaking process or the budget process. The budget does not only deal with funds, but also allows for policy bills to be inserted into the budget. So if there's something that the city needs urgently, and we know that in January, whether it's something with respect to additional funding or a fiscal issue, or if it's a policy issue that is minor, we would be looking to insert that into the budget process. And any budget party that we have, based on the schedule that I shared earlier, which is a January introduction date and a June finalization date, we would treat as high priority. I mean, so with that, that's kind of our proposal for how to manage legislation and manage engagement from the city this next legislative session. And I'd be happy to answer any questions from the mayor or council about the, any element of this presentation.
Thank you very much for the comprehensive presentation and also for providing the overview for clarity about the overall process, schedule, and priority areas. And I also appreciate the tiered system. It's a great way to utilize resources and also ensure that the council as a whole's objectives are also carefully managed and tracked. I would like to just add one additional focus area for consideration for tracking is anything related to environmental justice or even urban greening or anything related to improving our overall environment. We've seen so many different instances, issues with air quality, as well as other mitigation measures, and even noise issues relative to either industry or even transportation, and anything relative to providing some relief for communities impacted would be helpful.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Councilwoman Chambers, maybe we can just go down the line. I know Councilwoman Sharie and McCoy and I would like to share as well.
Hi, Mindy Agassi family. How are you? Good. I have a question. I agree with the mayor and those items that we need to watch, as well as any funding opportunities, that appropriation process. We know that that's heavy, but it's a deep concern of mine, because I always feel that when the money comes from Washington and gets to Sacramento, I don't know, excuse me, a black hole opens up sometimes. And I just want, I want to make sure that we look at that and we keep that on the forefront of you here, bills or any funding opportunities for Compton in those areas of transportation, homelessness, public safety, environmental justice. Please, of course, let us know so we can apply and take absolute measures to try to secure some of that funding. And my next question would be, would it be possible at the beginning of the year that you sent council a book of the new laws that have been enacted, effective January first, 2021? I know they have a book that comes out. And then you have said, they just said, you can send us each one, and then that way, we can inform our community of what bills have been passed that affect them.
Absolutely.
Okay. And thank you for your partnership. That was all my questions, Madam Mayor.
That's right. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Chambers. I see Councilwoman Sharie, it looks like she's ready. And Councilwoman Galvane, if you're ready as well, we'd be prepared. And Councilwoman McCoy, I know you're ready to go next as well. Thank you.
First, Madam Mayor, thank you. But I really want to thank Mel. I've worked for him for years, and it's been a pleasure from one entity to the next. They've always been great partners with the city. And it's been, he's always made sure we stayed on top of things. And that's one of the things I really do like about him, because any laws that came through, we pretty much know what they are. We pretty much knew what position we should take and how we should, what we should do. And we really need someone there in Sacramento to actually make sure that, help us be able to manage our way through this, through that part of the system. And he's been a great partner, making sure that we were able to do that. And I don't even have to say it, but he already knows pretty much that I'm always looking for anything that's financing when it comes down to infrastructure. And because I'm always thinking in terms of the street infrastructure and things that we need to get done. And so that is a given that he probably already know that that's what, before I can even say it, he already know that's what I'm, that's what I'm going to be talking about. And also to definitely the homeless population that we have to, that we're dealing with, because we really need, if there are any additional funding that we can use in order for us to be able to address that issue, because we need to make sure that we are addressing those things as well. And so that is something that I really think we really need to try to be more proactive and start looking in regards to those things to see if there's any funding or any type of resources that we can get to help and assist us with that, that situation. I kind of talked to the city manager earlier today about something, and hopefully, we can look at it to see whether or not it's something that we can move forward with, trying to get done, because we really do need, we need the money, we need that, but we need other resources too, because we talked about wraparound services and everything else that we need in order for us to be able to actually do a serious impact in addressing that issue. So again, Mel, I really want to thank you and your son for being here and working with us. And I am looking forward to working with you guys as we move through all of this, but I don't have any questions for you. I pretty much understand kind of had an idea as to what you were, what you were going to say, not by talking to you, but just listening to and knowing how you do things. And so I really want to say, I do appreciate you guys being here, working with the city. Thanks.
It's our pleasure. And he says thank you as well, even though you can't hear him.
I know I can, but I can hear you.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCoy?
Thank you, Mayor. Of course, it's a pleasure to have you guys on board. Thank you for all that you have done and that you will continue to do on behalf of the city. My area, of course, is, the Compton Creek runs through the entire city of Compton through all four districts, and that's one of my areas. Assemblyman Gibson was able to secure some funding to do a portion of the creek, but that whole creek needs some attention. So if there's anything, any kind of funding to do with refurbishing and cleaning up that creek, it would be greatly appreciated. Also, you know, because of the creek, there's a lot of homelessness down there. So I'm interested in funding for that as well. So thank you. Whatever you can offer, let us know what we need to do. And, you know, we're willing to work with you. So that's my area. And again, thank you guys so much. Thanks, Mel. Good to see you.
Our pleasure. Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Yeah, I want to thank you guys too for coming out today. It's good to see you guys. Good to see Mel as well. I know you guys have been representing the city of Compton for many years, for as long as I've been on the council, and it's been a pleasure working with you guys. Some of the funding that I'm interested in is infrastructure funding, like my colleague said earlier, as well as homelessness funding, because in my district, along the Alameda corridor and different areas in my district, we have a lot of homeless. And I know right now with COVID, the city closed parks and wrecks, so our kids don't have anywhere to go play. So if there's any funding there for after-school sports and after-school programs, once we get back to a sense of normality, I think that that would be great. And I think that should be made a priority for a city like Compton. Also, any kind of funding you have related to senior housing or senior programs, I think it'll be great to bring that to the city of Compton, because the, I always say it all the time, the seniors are our backbones. And any programs we can offer the seniors, I think it'll just be great. So I'm looking forward to working with you guys more closely this next cycle. And I know you guys are going to do some great things for us in Compton.
Thank you so much.
Thank you again for the presentation. And if you could also just provide us the, excuse me, the presentation via email, that would be helpful as well, so that we can just track your priorities. Of course, we have our city attorney that would like to weigh in, but we would love to be able to track the areas you've already identified. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney Damon Brown.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Mel Asagai, it's a pleasure to meet you. And Mr. Khalif Asagai, I actually have met him before. And I just wanted to acknowledge Khalif was a scholarship recipient when I was president of the Langston Bar Association back in 2012. And I remember having a conversation with him after the award ceremony, thinking, you know, where, you can go anywhere. He was one of our standout scholarship recipients in law school. And when he told me he wasn't going to practice law, he was going to go into policy, I shook my head and said, this is a great loss to the legal profession that somebody, you know, standout person of his caliber, who obviously, it's great for policy and great for the state, but certainly a loss to the legal profession. So it just does me well to see him pursuing exactly what he said that he wanted to do almost ten years ago and in this position, and now things coming full circle, doing good for, for our city. So I just wanted to congratulate you, Mr. Asagai, on pursuing your, your dreams. And glad that in some small way, at some point in the far distant past, Langston Bar Association was able to be a part of your trajectory. So congratulations again.
Thanks so much, Mr. City Attorney. And it was a big way. I remember the check. Thank you.
Thank you for that additional note, City Attorney. We appreciate it. Thank you all again for joining us, and we look forward to working with you all and also preparing some requests in advance of the upcoming legislative cycle. It does help to have the calendar clearly laid out, and so we are all on one page, and we can definitely agree on our strategy and priority areas moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
You still, we can't hear you.
Madam City Clerk, we are ready to resume. You are.
Madam Mayor, we are now at public comments.
Thank you.
Our first speaker is Jeremiah Pratt, District One, Mayor and City Council. How long does it take for your city manager to start allowing citizens the option of speaking our comments live on Zoom? Every public meeting in the area is allowing community members this option. I am sure City Clerk Alita Godwin would be a strong supporter of this option as well. City Council, I get so frustrated reading these comments. Don't you hear me struggling to pronounce these words? Please allow citizens to call in and say their comments live during council meetings. Craig, if you would have made me your assistant. Craig, if you would have made me your assistant city manager, I would have solved this problem by now. Of course, those are not my words. City Attorney Damon Brown, how long do you think before the district attorney and the State Bar Association receives evidence that you lied under oath and live and still live at seven twenty eight Val Vista Street, Pomona, California? The look on your face every time your real address is mentioned during audience comments is priceless. Finally, city manager, how do you expect to keep Asia Brown's marijuana dispensary closed at eight hundred East Compton Boulevard on the corner of Chester Avenue if Michelle Chambers liaison is the biggest client? City manager, your employee can be seen at this dispensary at least three times a week. By the way, they have all types of specials. You can get five grams of marijuana for eighty dollars. Mention Asia Brown, you get an extra ten percent discount. I encourage all my neighbors to sign the recall petition for Michelle Chambers in District One. Michelle, we will miss that funny little Tourette syndrome thing that you do every time council member Sharif, McCoy, or Galvain says something Asia Brown doesn't agree with. But it's time for you to go back down that yellow brick road to Inglewood. Recall Michelle Chambers, send her packing back to Inglewood. Our next comment comes from Anna Franklin. Compton corruption millennium style. Since you are, since you all like games, let's pay, connect the dots. You have a corrupt and unethical auditing firm who bills for services not in the scope of their contract. They get angry with the controller who would not pay the invoices. You have a corrupt Chambers who was angry at the controller because she would not give her money raised by Councilwoman Zarita earmarked for the annual breast cancer walk. The two, the unethical auditing firm and corruption Chambers join forces, give the controller an unacceptable, unacceptable evaluation and she gets fired. The unethical auditing firm gets the city to hire their girl as controller and the auditing firm gets their invoices paid. Now their girl, the controller, passes up current employee number one on the payroll supervisors list and bringing in her girl who works at her firm. Now ladies and gentlemen, you have no accountability. The auditors, the controller, the payroll supervisor, and Chambers are all in cahoots. Let's call this a chamber chain of events. Chamber City Manager Craig, who performed like a clown at your inauguration, wants to fire an employee. He says hired someone with the record when you have hired two convicts to work on the city's graffiti chain gang. This, is this a case of the pot calling the kettle black? Hypocrisy at its worst. Your eagles are going to get you caught up. Employees have pictures of Screaming Eagles illegally dumping in the city yard. Well, you dumb dums did a profile on the owner of Screaming Eagles where you included a photo of his, of his truck. Wow, how stupid of you. It's a picture of the same truck that illegally dumps in the city yard. Where are the dump tickets? Our next speaker is Kevin Tatum. To the mayor and city council, I am a resident and I have had a few rounds with the law back in my youth. However, that should not prevent me from being employed by the city of Compton. Is the council investigating the incidents reported a couple of weeks ago by the young man who alleged Craig Cornwell reviewed his background and hiring from twelve years ago? Mayor Brown, you pretend to be for the people. Yeah, you, yeah. You're saying you want to help eight hundred families, but you and the city manager seem to be behind the scenes secretly tearing down black men and women. Is it true that you target employees to fire undercover pretending it was just a layoff? Has anyone reached out to the city manager that actually hired that young man back in two thousand and eight? Sounds like reverse institutional racism is going on here. Is it a public, is it a publicity stunt to give eight hundred families money when the employees are saying you laid off forty to fifty families and have lived in the city of Compton? What are you doing for those families? Are they going to be part of the eight hundred? We want to know what the cities and in particular Cornwell stand on hiring people with criminal backgrounds. You can't say you are against police brutality, yet you are not doing anything to help the people unless it gives you political clout. Asia Brown, what happened to the gang intervention people? Didn't any of them have criminal backgrounds? Or with the word, or but the word is Cornwell got rid of them. You got rid of Parks and Recreation. What are our children supposed to do? You don't want to hire people with criminal backgrounds, but you close down parks. Other cities have their parks open. You should all be ashamed, just lining your pockets and hurting the people. Why did Craig Cornwell go after the young man's background after twelve years? What is going on at City Hall? Did Mr. Cornwell put false information about this young man in a report? Can we trust our city manager to be honest? Is lying grounds for termination, Mr. Cornwell? If you lied, should you be fired? Did he lie, City Council? Has the city heard of civil rights rehabilitation, compassion, empathy? We want answers. Our next speaker is H. Shauna. Dear City Council, the Assistant City Manager Trefina Simmons is the manager over the Human Resources Department, but she has no experience in HR. She's incompetent and doesn't have a clue what she is doing. The HR department has had three women with lots of HR experience and Craig has fired them all. But he's, but he begs for his job. This is not fair. What is, what is this? The ignorant leading the ignorant? Our next speaker is Anna Overton. To the City Council of the City of Compton, our city attorney Damon Brown needs to be fired because he is drinking and partying on the job. This is so unprofessional. We don't need a drunk pretending to be an attorney. Who pays for his liquor anyway? Is it coming from us taxpayers? I wouldn't be surprised. Damon is a worthless attorney who worked for the city of Compton as a consultant in past and he had, and he was let go because he did nothing for our city. And that idiot Craig Cornwell hired him back. Fire Damon and fire Craig too. Our next speaker is Kay Hatchett. Hello, Mayor and City Council. Craig Cornwell needs to be fired because he paid his Assistant City Manager Fina Simmons' husband, Dion Simmons, a salary for days he was supposed to be suspended without pay. Craig shows favoritism to his friends. This is unfair to all Compton employees. We are tired of his poor management and favoritism. Our next speaker is Joyce Kelly. Good evening, Asia Brown and Craig Cornwell. When will the public be able to have a council meeting? There is no reason why the people can't come to the chambers for a meeting to address the business of the city. The council can add a table on the platform of the di- dais to social distance the officials. If you must draw straws to see who sits there, see who sets where, do it. City Attorney can address the Brown Act and let you know about the people not giving up our rights to the elected officials. The people of Compton need to come, the people of Compton need to know how you people are misappropriating public funds. Tana McCoy, you're supposed to represent the third district where the people are aware of and concerned about the district and the city. This district has the most concerned people who have continued to speak up. Emma Sharif, you have people in your district who are concerned as well and they think they are the elite of Compton. You both need to stand up with Isaac Galvain and represent the people. After all, he's the youngest member who is showing the matured strength to represent the people of the city. Alita William Kemp said, you never read his audience comments. The Brown Act says anyone can speak at the council meeting. Again, when will the people be able to come to council meeting? Our next speaker is Connie Halbig. I was under the impression that the residents pay good money to have this broadcast system updated and repaired. Then why is it so hard to hear when Alita, when Alita, when she talks? Why is there almost always that the translator is bleeding through at times? The only things we can see is the smirks and funny looks from Michelle and Asia when Ms. Sharif is making a good point and wants clarification on something for the residents. It's very disturbing watching someone chewing gum. For one, I will be so happy when the April elections come so that many are either recalled or voted out for doing such a bad job and disrespect of residents and others on the board and other offices. When is Doug Sanders intend to give a report? Why is Michael Antoine Assistant City Manager? Why was he rehired after all that money was stolen and he was there? My last comment is to wait till after the elections to see if we need a bond. Asia and Craig need to stop this trying to slip something past the residents for their own benefit. Not, not, I'm sorry, no to any bonds. We are in debt now and Asia won't be around. Listen to the residents for once. Put it to a vote in April. Still watching and listening as always. Eyes and ears wide open for your comments. Our next comment comes from William Kemp. Good afternoon, council. Can the council answer why the city hasn't raised the fines, turned off utilities, or seized properties of illegal marijuana dispensaries? This time I'm hoping you answer. Also, I ask, what is the interest rate for the bond? What is the payback schedule and what is our recovery time? How much do we currently owe in bonds? What's our credit rating? If low, does it have a effect on the amount of money we can borrow as well as the terms and interest rates given? Our next comment comes from Adolfo Varis. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I am the Executive Director of the Latino Chamber of Commerce of Compton. As we are getting closer to the end of the year and the holidays that we cherish with family and community as one, even though we are dealing with the COVID nineteen pandemic, we as a community came together to show the world that you are not alone. That you have a community that cares and loves you regardless, your circumstances during this period of time of uncertainty. As an official organization that represents not only stakeholders in the community, but as well Compton residents, whether you're Latino or not, gay or not, we are here to help as much as we can as a Latino organization. We have partnered up council members like Emma Sharif and Tana McCoy to help bring resources and make the community know that they are there for you during these troubling time. We have gave over two thousand boxes of food and bags of hygiene products to people in need. We would nev, we would have never been able to do any of this without the support of stakeholders and res- residents alike. We are getting ready for this Saturday Halloween event at the Burrell McDonald Park. We are thankful that the Compton Chamber of Commerce shared and promoting the Latino Chamber of Commerce of Compton and Compton City Council Women of the Third District Halloween trunk and treat drive-through event. We are also excited about sponsoring and working together with United Empowerment Foundation and Councilwomen Tana McCoy in an event called Virtual Halloween Movie Night, where the kids and their family are able to receive a build your own popcorn kit and sit to watch the new movie remake called The Witches, which is very, which I'm very excited and blessed to be able to contribute as the Latino Chamber of Commerce of Compton in promoting, spreading love and spending time with the family together in a safe and responsible way. Thank you for, thank you for time, but I would like to end with this quote from the Bible, which states, "Faith as small as a mustard seed, you can move mountains." As the Executive Director of the Latino Chamber of Commerce of Compton, we are consistently moving mountains and working together for the betterment of the Compton community. And our final comment comes from Marjorie Ship. Good evening. I am Marjorie Ship from the Third District. Mayor Brown, City Manager Cornwell, and City Council. I read an article in the Los Angeles Times on Sunday, October the eighteenth, twenty twenty, about a program that would guarantee income for eight hundred family for two years in the city of Compton. That sounds like a good program for our community. However, I have some questions and concerns. How will the family be selected? How will they be processed to make sure that they will use the money to help supplement their basic needs? The article stated that my brother's keeper will be one of the advisors of the Compton Pledge. I didn't know that organization was still functioning in Compton. I would like to know how many of our Compton Unified School District young men have gone through the program? And what are the criteria to participate in the program? Thank you for your time. I will be looking forward to the answer to my question. Good night. God bless all of you and be safe. That concludes the comments. Madam Mayor, we are now at consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Uh, consent items are routine and expected to be non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the council at once without discussion unless a council member requests for an item to be removed or discussed.
Sommo.
Sommoed. Second.
Discussion or, uh, any amendments? Roll call?
Councilperson Chambers?
Yes.
Galvain?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Item number five under reports of officers and boards and commissioners request for Ms. Brenda Postel to be removed from the Compton Taxpayer Committee, which is the Measure P committee.
Do we have to vote to accept it?
To accept her resignation, yes.
Sommo. Second.
A discussion, I, I would just ask that we make a valiant effort to really convene, uh, this body. I know that there were issues with scheduling and different people not being available. But if, uh, staff finds that we cannot find a, a date that works for everyone, I would ask that you just notify us immediately. So if we need to make new appointments, we can do that. But this, this body must meet and it's unacceptable that they haven't met thus far.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, November fourth at six PM, we are hosting.
Wonderful. Thank you for the progress and for, uh, following through, uh, with ensuring that they have come together, something that other management has not done. So thank you.
Madam Mayor, I do have a question from the, uh, for the city manager. The meeting is set for November the fourth. Do you have a confirmation from all the people that's going to be attending? Cause I know the last time they've been setting those meetings, people said be coming and then they never showed up. So I'm just wondering, have you been able to confirm that with the, uh, with the other board members?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, thank you again, city manager. And if we need to make another appointment, um, right away, um, I think we should be prepared to do that so that they can ensure that they have a form, um, as well.
I believe we have two slots open.
Okay.
I'm not. If I'm not, uh, incorrect.
These were by districts, is that right?
I don't work.
No, I don't either.
Maybe it's summer.
Uh, Madam Mayor, we actually with the removal of Ms. Postel, there is two vacancies. One appointment is for councilperson Galvain. And if I'm not mistaken, Madam Mayor, Ms. Postel was your appointment?
Is this the, what, what committee is this?
This is the Compton Taxpayers Committee, um, Measure P.
The Measure P? Oh, remember I took you the, the application downstairs, uh, like a year ago? She, she didn't want to do it no more? Natalie, uh, Servant, Natalie Covedo, I believe?
I don't recall that name. Um, I do know that.
Yeah, I had, uh, got an application from you or your office and I hand delivered it downstairs with her. And I just assumed, um, she was approved. Maybe you can check the files. If not, I could just have her fill out another one. But this was like a year ago, maybe, or early this year?
I will definitely, um, I will definitely, um, check before I leave tonight.
Thank you. And it was Natalie Covedo was the name. I'll text it to you.
Thank you.
And then, uh, Madam Clerk, while I have you, I'll also be prepared to, uh, appoint a replacement at the next council meeting. Next regularly scheduled, I should say.
Yes, I will place that on the agenda.
Okay, I appreciate it. All right. Uh, thank you again, City Manager. Roll call?
Counselperson Chambers?
Yes.
Galvane?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Item number six under City Managers Report is an oral report for the 2021 election financing update. Mr. City Manager, would you like me to give that report?
Please, Madam Clerk. That'd be great.
Mayor and City Council, in September of this year, council requested that I reach out to the county to, uh, request, um, an estimate on elections for the city of Compton. I received for the April 2021 standalone election, um, I received an estimate at $703,000 for six offices with the voter registration of 47,819. Um, I was then asked to request an estimate for an all-male ballot, ballot election for our April 2021 election. Again, with six offices on the ballot, uh, 48,312 registered voters, the estimate came in at $385,000. Um, one of the things, uh, they mentioned in their estimate is that, um, this amount could change if another city decides to hold an election during the same year that we do. Of course, the cost will be shared, um, or the voter registration can go up. Um, so it's just an estimate, but this is a ballpark figure of 385,000.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, for your report. Um, Mr. City Manager, do you want to weigh in?
Well, um, Mayor and Council, um, from a budget standpoint, 385,000 is, looks better than 700, uh, 700,000. Uh, the elections are a general fund obligation. So that's where the money has to, uh, come from. We have to, um, take a look at the, the Measure P proposed financing and, uh, make some, uh, choices there. But again, I think those choices are easier at 385 than the, uh, than the prior number.
Hmm, Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Mr. City Manager, how much do you already have budgeted for the election? That would be used for the election? I think you had said last time before. I think this came up before and you mentioned that there were some, uh, funds that was put aside for the, uh, for an election. How much was that?
285,000.
285,000 dollars? So basically you're looking at coming up with a hundred thousand dollars pretty much.
Um, 400.
Yeah, she said it was 385.
That's.
Right, so 485.
No, uh, okay, I'm sorry, I'm mixing something. You've come up with 485 if we decide to just do a regular election. But if we decided to do an all-male election, then it's 385. Am I right, Madam City Clerk?
So the estimate is 385 and currently we have in the budget, um, 285. So we'll.
Okay.
Need additional 100,000.
That's, that's what I was, that's what I was referring to. I wasn't thinking about the other election. I was just looking at the, uh, the all-male and the, uh, all-male, right? Um, so that's what I was looking at.
But keep in mind, this is just for April.
Okay, I got you. Uh, okay. Okay.
Right.
Uh, when is the deadline that we'll need to decide by?
The election will need to be called in early December. I typically like to call the election late November, but, um, early, early December is the latest.
Okay, um, I think a, a presentation perhaps on what an all-male election would look like would be helpful. Um, I know that the county obviously will be operating, um, the election to a point, but the city clerk obviously will be coordinating directly with them. So it will be helpful to just understand how this would differ from, uh, a poll election in Compton.
So Madam Mayor, what I would, um, do is I will lay out various options because the, again, you can do an all-male election with no, um, vote centers. You can do an all-male election with one vote center in each district. You can do an all-male election with two vote centers in each district. So, um, that's, that's kind of like the layout, but council can decide if, how they want, but I can lay out different scenarios.
Okay, uh, and then with this also, the format that the county has now, that, does that also include an early voting provision? Should people vote earlier?
I don't believe for the city elections, but I can double-check that.
Okay. That'd be helpful to know as well. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Under New Business, item number seven is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Compton acting as the Housing Successor Agency to the City of Compton, authorizing the city manager to enter into a property maintenance service agreement with New West Landscaping and establish a purchase order to provide compensation for services rendered during fiscal year 2020, 2021 in the amount of $13,500.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
Yes, please.
Madam Mayor and, and City Council, this item involves our property maintenance, um, services for our housing successor agency, which is separate from our successor, uh, agency, uh, item. So this is on the housing successor, uh, requesting $13,500 to maintain those properties.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional discussion?
Uh, I just have a statement I would like to make is that, uh, previously at one time, when the, when the, uh, item was, uh, was, uh, posted, we would know what funding source it would be used to pay it out of. I would like to know if the city manager could please start putting that back, adding that back into the, uh, uh, item to let us know exactly what the fund, what fund this would be coming from. I know you said housing, but I, I think it would be still great for us to have that information there on all the different items so that we'll know exactly how this is being paid.
The account number?
Well, no, you, you normally, at one time we requested and had it happen for a couple of times. Is that just like the, uh, when you posted the amount, we knew exactly what, uh, not so much of the account, but we knew what fund it was coming from. Whether it's general fund, whether it's housing or whatever, we knew where it was coming from, how it was being paid.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional discussion? Roll call?
Counselperson Chambers?
Yes.
Galvane? Galvane? McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Item number eight is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Compton, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement and issue a purchase order to the Norwalk-Lamarada Unified School District for the lease of Central Basin pumping rights for fiscal year 2020, 2021 in the amount of 62, 62,370 dollars.
So moved.
Uh, second.
Discussion?
Thank you.
Madam Mayor? The council, we have our Water Department General Manager, uh, in the waiting room. Mr. Dickinson, would you like to, uh, uh, prepare a summary for this item?
And as, uh, Mr. Dickinson is prepared, if he could also, uh, just share where we are for, um, the difference in supply and demand for the lease. Um, I recognize that we, uh, lease, or we supply, um, excuse me, water annually and then we are leasing the difference. But over time, it changes every year. So I'm just curious as to where we are this year in comparison to, uh, prior consumption, if he has that information available.
Are you ready?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I don't know where we're at year-to-date in production, but typically we've been on an average of about 7,000 to 7,100 acre-feet a year is our demand.
Okay.
So we need to make up 1,100-ish, 1,200 acre-feet a year to meet that demand from what our pumping rights are. Our pumping rights are 5,780 acre-feet a year. So that's why we lease water in. If we don't, if we can't lease water in, then we have to purchase Metropolitan Water District water, which is about twice the price of what we can produce water for. And that's even producing water and leasing, even with the lease that we lease the water rights in for. So we pay up, we pay a replenish assessment every year for every acre foot of groundwater we also produce. So with our punishment assessment, our operating cost and even lease cost is still cheaper than MWD imported water.
Right.
Uh, Madam Mayor?
Yes, yes, Ms.
I want to ask you one question. When you lease this water, is this like, uh, water that's on reserve? Or how is that done? Or this is water that being used right now?
Hey, what this is, Counselwoman Sharif, this is other producers who have water rights who don't use them. So like Norwalk Unified School District, they're, they've had water rights as part of the basin and they don't use their water rights. So they lease them out and bring revenue into their school district.
Okay.
Producers that are, it could be like you, Counselwoman Sharif, your family could have farmed here years ago and had water rights as part of the basin judgment. And you've kept them over time because you don't need to produce them because you're not farming. So you lease them out to producers like the City of Compton or other water agencies. And that brings you a revenue stream on a yearly basis. So it's each year, everybody has what's called an annual pumping allocation. So that's our water right, 5,780 acre-feet. So ones that don't use their rights or have excess rights, they'll lease them on a yearly basis. So they don't lose out on revenue.
Okay, thank you. I got, I understand now. Thank you so much. I would just want to, want you to clarify that. Okay.
And what it is, is they put these out to bid every year. So it's basically I, they solicit bids and you put in a bid for, um, what you think are good prices.
Thank you, um, Mr. Dickinson, for your, uh, brief presentation. Very informative. Um, we appreciate it. Any additional questions? Roll call?
Counselperson Chambers? Counselperson Chambers?
You're on mute. Alita?
I, I'm always on mute.
No, we can't hear you. Sorry, Madam City Clerk.
Um, that's upstairs.
Her, uh, microphone is usually on mute, so it's something else going on. I know how you know, but.
Can you hear me now?
No. Something with the system. And the chambers.
Okay.
Show of hands, Counselperson Chambers?
I can't hear you still. Trying to read your lips.
Right. District one? District one? She said district one.
Mm-hmm, she said yes. We need you to be verbal, Counselwoman Chambers. Uh, we need you to.
Yes. Yes.
Three, yes. Yes.
Yes. Yeah. Her face is out the screen, I can tell.
Can you hear me or no?
Yes.
You can hear me?
No, not yet.
It was working.
It was working.
Mm-hmm.
Testing, can you hear me now?
Item number nine?
Yes.
Okay, do you want me to read it for you? Uh, okay, I'll read it. Uh, item number nine is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Compton, authorizing the city manager to enter into a transfer agreement with the Los Angeles County Flood Control District. Agreement number 2020 MP 18, Safe Clean Water Program Dash Municipal Program. May we have a motion on item?
So moved.
A motion by Counselwoman Sharif and a second by Counselwoman McCoy. And discussion, uh, Mr. City Manager, if you could just, uh, give a brief summary of this item.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. The city of Compton is a participant in the LA County Flood Co-, Flood Control District, uh, Clean Water Program. And this, uh, this program is, is, uh, established to fund projects to increase stormwater and, uh, urban runoff capture and reduce, um, stormwater in the, uh, Flood Control District. Uh, the city is requested to enter into a transfer agreement with LA County Flood Control District. And this will provide, um, 1.2 million dollars is the estimated, um, share that we would increase, uh, city revenues by. And it would be, um, placed in our Measure W, uh, fund. And we're asking for authority to enter into the agreement.
Thank you, uh, City Manager, for the summary of, of this opportunity. Any discussion? I would, uh, just like to, and it's not necessarily tied directly to disagreement, um, but also just in flood management, if we could also just have a status update on where we are with our drainage clearance. I know we are all heading into rainy season and, uh, many residents will be inundated with, um, floods throughout residential streets. So we can get an idea where we are with clearing those areas. preemptively, hopefully, we can have some improvement over last year.
And Murr, and Murr will be one of those streets because that's one of the concerns, uh, the community have there with Murr is because of the dips that was, was removed. They was concerned about the drainage and the, and the overflow of the water. And so I did speak to City Manager about that. I know that's something he's probably looking into right now and regarding it. So, uh, maybe you can explain why they removed the dips because everybody keeps saying where the dips is going to cause, um, more water to be there. So, Mr. City Manager.
Do not be concerned that Murr is state-of-the-art designed and the grading is, it, it, it will flow nicely.
Okay. Yeah, I think they need to know because they keep, I'm like, wait a minute, I, I'm not a street person.
And I've been stopped on my, my mini walk to explain the, the grading.
Yeah, they was concerned about the, uh, the driving, how people, how fast people was driving, but also concerned about the fact of whether or not the, uh, the overflow water once the start, the rainy season starts. So thank you.
So I know it's been, um, it's been challenging with, uh, the design of the street lasting so long. The design of the street can go between six months, six to 12 months. Um, but this is the value now of that. Uh, because the, the water flows have been assessed and, uh, it should, it should flow much, much better now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, additional discussion? Roll call?
Can you hear me? No.
Yes.
Yes, you can hear me? Yes?
Oh, yeah, Counselperson District Two.
Oh, um, yes.
Counselperson District Three.
Yes.
District Four.
Yes.
Councilwoman and myself, yes. And now we are moving forward to council comments. Councilwoman Michelle Chambers.
Hi, thank you. I'm Michelle. Okay. Uh, City Manager, would you please give me an update on the marijuana dispensary at Wilmington and on Rose Trains, please? Um, it's gotten, it's gotten pretty bad. Also, on Seabreeze Park, the campers, they're, they're there and brought friends. If we can clear that out as well, or send someone to look at that, neighbors are complaining. It is taking up parking on Compton Avenue as well as, um, it's just not a good look. We have a concern tonight that I'm going to talk about briefly. I'm going to speak to, never mind, I'll speak to the captain about that. Let me go on to my last event. Uh, thank you so much to all the partners who participated in our 3,000 food giveaway this weekend at Gonzalez Park. It was very, it was very successful. I want to thank a lot of all the volunteers that came out and helped our city manager, our city treasurer. Sir Doug Sanders came out. City Manager's daughter, little Clark, came out and helped. And we had so many Compton Advocates, Omega Sci-Fi came out, volunteered. We just had a great day. We gave out food and backpacks and toys and gallons of hand sanitizer. So it was a really great day for the community. Everything went. The community came by, they got, received their food baskets. It was very well received. I just want to thank Omega Sci-Fi, Wild Horse Children's Foundation, Compton Advocates, Uplift LA, Give a Children Hope, Rodney King Foundation, Magna Tamales, and of course DJ Sevier was there, LA Dodgers, own DJ. So thank you all again for partnering with us to feed the City of Compton residents. It was a great day. Also, I would like to say, I'm proud to report a great increase in our COVID testing. Thank you all the residents for utilizing the center. We were kind of worried there because we know if you don't use it, you'll lose it. And so the residents have been coming out, taking advantage of the free COVID testing at Gonzalez Park, Sunday to Thursday. Hours are now from 7:00, 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Last Sunday, they had over 100 tests and every day they're running about 60, 70 people. So I'm glad to see. And we are trying to get ahead and lessen the curve and get in front of the curve and just try to prevent COVID here in the city of spreading, in the city of Compton. And so thank you all for coming out, getting tested. And special thanks to St. John's for having the testing in our park and all other, other resources. That is my comments for tonight. It is always my pleasure to serve you. Have a great evening, Compton.
Thank you, Councilwoman Chambers. Councilman Galvane? Uh, I believe he's, um, no longer here. Um, Councilwoman Anna McCoy. We cannot hear you, madam. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just talking. Uh, first of all, I'd like to, thank you, Mayor. I would like to announce that I will be hosting a virtual town hall meeting this Thursday, October 29, 5:30 PM. And if you're, if you have any questions or that you want to be answered, please send your email it to vallsenat, V-A-L-S-E-N-A-T, at comptoncity.org. Or, and the, the speakers will be this, our own city manager, he will be doing an update on the city and as well as talking about, um, the, um, Mr. City Manager.
Uh, proposed bond financing.
There you go. And thank you. I had him blocked for a minute. We'll have someone doing the crime stats for, for the, this quarter. And then I will be updating on just what's going on in the community. So join us on Thursday at 5:30 PM. It will be broadcasted live on Channel 36 as well as, um, I, I'm not sure. I think Vanita has it on, will have it on Facebook Live. So thank you. And then, um, I will be hosting a trunk or treat in conjunction with the Latino Chamber on Halloween, beginning at 6:00 PM over at Burrell McDonald Park, 2516 West Alondra. It's a drive-through. It's just strictly drive-through. If you have children who have their costumes, please take a picture and submit it also to vallsenat@comptoncity.org. And they will be judging. There will be a judging and you're, please, when you submit it, submit your contact information, your child's name and your contact information so that we can get in contact with you and the prizes, we will let you know who won the prizes and they will be distributed after Halloween. And then I'm, um, also will be putting the information in the candy bags about live streaming a movie, The Witches, which is a remake of a old movie and we'll, they'll be live streaming it on Sunday. And the information will be in your candy bag. In your candy bag also will be a popcorn making kit so that you can make your popcorn and then view your movie. So. And then, um, on November 20th, I will be hosting in conjunction with Councilwoman Sharif, a drive-in movie over at Unity Christian Fellowship. So we have some things in store just to break up the, the monotony of just being stuck in the house and kids stuck in the house doing school as well as, you know, just not able to get out. And so with our limitations, we just want to do it as well as we can with social distancing. So that's the best we could come up with and more information will be forthcoming about the drive-in. And, um, also, um, I attended the virtual meeting for the creek that was last week, last Wednesday, and we will be having another section to this as we go forward with the redesign of the, the first phase of the Compton Creek. Um, and that meeting will take place November 14th. More information is forthcoming on that. I attended the Sunny Cove Block Club, Phase, I think it's Phase Four. They had a, a, a social distance block club meeting where they just wanted to get together and catch up on what's going on. Um, I, I attended Operation Unity Prayer Meeting, which was outstanding. I tell you, we prayed for the city. We had some outstanding prayers put, sent up for the, for the City of Compton. The mayor was, um, actually the keynote of this prayer. And, um, then Councilwoman Sharif, she hosted one later that evening. So our city is definitely covered in prayer and we just need to move forward. And then finally, I will not finally, I was able to swear in the new board members for the Latino Chamber. I swore in the owner Eugene, the owner of Grocery Outlet and several other members. And it was my honor to do so. And, um, Mr. City Manager, um, can we start sending out notices to these businesses that are not keeping their property up? Um, I know we've had several residents who spoke on the businesses as, you know, like, you know, Food for Less, they're not keeping up, you know, the parking lot and, you know, the trash when you go over there. So I would like a letter to go out to them as well as CBS. And, you know, I'm going to start, when I do my drive-through weekly, I'm going to start writing down the addresses of these businesses that we need to just notice. And, you know, I know that we've been in a pandemic, so I'm not asking for anything extreme, but I do know that they can actually pick up the trash that's around their business. And that's not too much to ask. As well as, you know, we were getting inundated with people parking over there in front of the, um, the 18 acres. They're, they're starting to have trucks and mobile homes and all that. So if we could put that on the regular patrol for code enforcement to kind of notice. Because not only that, I actually was driving and I saw that a truck had breached the actual fence and was in there. And so I did make contact, but, you know, that's the kind of thing that's happening because they're parking over there and you can't see because those mobile homes are blocking where you can see and trucks go up in there and they're dumping. So I would like you to do that. And also you answered the question. So with the re, with the repaving of the streets, the drainage Caldwell, they did have a concern as to whether the water was going to drain properly now. And so, um, and also the other question is, when are we going to the streets that will resurface? When are they going to put the lines back down? So I don't know. Um, and the speed, those that had speed humps, the speed humps. So I think that is all. Join me for the virtual town hall meeting, the trunk or treat. And with that being said, thank you and have a blessed evening. And also there is a, I'm sorry, there is a truck parked on Compton Boulevard. And I will send you, I will email you the, the address of the truck that is throwing trash out on Compton Boulevard, which is our major thoroughfare that we, you know, want to do whatever we can to make sure it's clean. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCoy. And I'm sure City Manager is prepared to respond.
Yes, I just had a few quick comments. One, we are planning to replace speed humps and provide striping. I may have to bring an item to council. We are at the very end of the grind and overlay project. To my dismay, I thoroughly enjoy, um, providing new streets. So I'll have to look for some more money and propose a way to continue that contract to keep that going. Madam Clerk, are you still muted for this evening?
Can you hear me?
I, I won't be able to do this justice, but, um, the city clerks, dear friend and spiritual leader and a great friend of the entire community, Pastor George Thomas, his birthday is today. And we certainly want to wish him many, many more. And I consider him, as he says in church, a, a good friend of mine. So it's my time to say. Happy birthday.
He did a wonderful.
Happy birthday.
Yes, happy birthday, Pastor Thomas.
Happy birthday.
Continue to bless him with many more. Definitely a blessing to his congregation and the community at large.
Great job, Craig. Good job.
Yes, Councilwoman Sharif.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I want to think, we, you know, on Thursday, uh, my colleague, uh, Councilwoman McCoy, she kind of touched on this about this operation of prayer on this past Thursday. And I think it was very, very instrumental. I mean, very inspiring to the, to all of us that was there as well, to the residents that came out as well. And, and we did, we had prayer that morning at 9:30. We had another prayer at 3 o'clock. And I really want to thank all the pastors that came out to both of those events and really took part. Because we really need the pastors and everything to start really getting, if people in the community really start getting involved here as far as the city and what's really going on. Because I really think that, in my opinion, as I always say, is that, um, good, government means everybody have to be involved, you know, if I have to participate. And so I'm happy to see everybody coming out and really participating, but I really want to thank all the pastors and residents and city staff that participated in last week's prayer vigil, uh, the two, 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 both prayer events was, like I said, was great. It both of them took place on Thursday. And I believe in the power of prayer and I hope we will continue to pray for the City of Compton individually and collectively so that we can continue to try to move our city forward. But like I said, it is really going to take all of us working together in order to try to make this happen. So I really want to thank, uh, again, thank everyone for participating. And Madam Mayor, you did an excellent job. I really want to say thank you as well. And, um, I also would like to give a special thank you to the Sheriff's Civilian Oversight Commissioner, Priscilla Ochin, who joined last week's town hall meeting. Councilwoman McCoy, this, this town hall meeting is very similar to the one that you're getting ready to have. Had a little bit of challenge, but it turned out well. Uh, I believe the information shared gave clarity to what the civilian, uh, Sheriff Oversight Commission is doing and the measures they have taken, uh, to speak up against the, uh, the issues on behalf of the communities that they really represent. I also would like to thank the Fourth District Youth Leadership Council and the Compton Law Enforcement Review Board appointee for joining and weighing in. And asking, they asked some great questions. It been, I mean, it just really turned out really great. I mean, I was very excited about that event. And, uh, but we did have a few, uh, little hiccups there because we had everything going. We had the Zoom going. We had Facebook Live going. We had Channel 36 going. So we had a little bit of problems there, but at the end, it really turned out, uh, turned out great. It really did. So. So you, you also be, uh, turn out well as, uh, as well to, uh, Councilwoman McCoy. Uh, upcoming events, I have a grabbing go food giveaway this Friday, October the 30th, from 12 to 1. I will host a food giveaway in collaboration with the Mount Pirking Baptist Church, Drew Child Care Development Corporation and the Compton Chamber of Commerce. The driver food giveaway, the drive-up food giveaway will be located at 506 East Laura Street. That's 506 East Laura Street. That's right there on, um, Santa Fe and Laura. Mama's on the corner, in front of the Drew Child Care Development Corporation. And, uh, we're getting ready to have another cleanup in, in the Fourth District, Saturday, November 14th, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. There will be a, another hub clean, city cleanup. I have, um, will be in collaboration, uh, again, with the distinguished men and various organizations to clean the city. I'm inviting you all to join us on this Saturday, November 14th, and we will be again there at your church, uh, Councilwoman, at Unity Church at 16133 Atlantic Avenue. We'll be, that's where we'll be, be there at 8 o'clock that morning. So we're asking people to come out and really join us and, and clean up the Fourth District. Okay, and also, uh, I do have some, uh, one comment, uh, a couple of comments, uh, Mr. City Manager. One is about CVS right here on Compton Boulevard. They boarded up the door back when we did the march. As of today, that door is still boarded up. And, uh, a couple of the people, residents from the community have been there and questioned why the door, why is it still boarded up? And they are being told by the manager that they have no intention of taking those boards off. And in my opinion, I think that's very disrespectful to, uh, this community because that store is the only one, from what I can tell, is still boarded up. And when you go to other cities, it's not, they, they have, they have unboarded those, that door. Our, they have, they have continued to keep this door boarded up and refuse to remove the boards off the door. So I am asking that someone please get in contact with the head office and find out what is really going on, the reason why the boards are still there. Because the community is getting very disheartened with this because, uh, like I said, it's, uh, they feel like it's a sign of disrespect. So I really would hope that you would, uh, really check that out and pretty much, and get back with the council and let us know, give us an update on that as to what is happening with that. And, uh, in regards to the marijuana dispensaries, uh, on this, at the Concerned Citizens Meeting on the 17th, uh, they asked, well, they requested a meeting with, with the city as well as the sheriff. And I was just wondering if you, Mr. City Manager, could give us an update as to when that meeting would take place? Because they have called me about it and I know they are waiting digitally for that meeting to take place because they do have some concerns about all the marijuana dispensers that are still open here in our community. I am, have a concern because right beyond Chester and Compton Boulevard, I have two next door to each other, right next door to each other, and both of those marijuana dispensers are still open. They closed them down and they opened back up. And I'm still having a problem with the one right there down the street, uh, on Compton Boulevard that's next to the childcare center there on Compton Boulevard, which I've given you guys that address several times. I'm pretty sure the sheriff already have that address, probably memorized by heart. So, uh, if you could please get in contact, just let us know what we are as far as closing these dispensers and what, and what would be our next step as far as trying to make this happen, uh, because the community is getting very upset about those things. So I would like for you to just get back with us, but please let us know when that meeting would take place that the Concerned Citizens did request. And, um, the LA Regional COVID Fund provides funding to micro entrepreneurs, small businesses, nonprofits, and diverse owned enterprises who have been struggling during the pandemic. The application deadline is on October the 30th. Interested, if you're interested, you can apply by going to la covidfund.org, that LA, that's la covidfund.org or search the. that's lacovidfund.org, or search the LA Regional COVID Fund website. And you can get an application from there and you can fill it out, because they are really trying to help these small businesses, because we know a lot of them are struggling and they may not, some of them may not be able to reopen, but those who can't help, they're really trying to help. So please, go online and get an application and submit that application. And I would like to say, happy birthday to Pastor Thomas. Enjoy your birthday and I'm wishing you many more. Thank you. Thank you, Madam.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I forgot something, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm hosting a food giveaway with Abbot's Men General as well as Councilmember Herb Wesson tomorrow in front of the Compton Woodley Airport, 1021 West Alondra Boulevard, 2:00 PM. Please come by, there will also be COVID testing and box of dry goods as well as meat. So please come by tomorrow, 2:00 PM for food giveaway as well as essential needs. So please come by that. And then, Mr. City Manager, the tree that is preventing the street sweeper from getting by is at 1521 West 163rd Street. And that is all, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much.
Of course. Thank you very much, Councilwoman McCoy. And I will also be brief. I just want to, again, just echo the sentiments of my colleagues about the Operation Unity and as well as the prayer event coordinated and organized by Councilwoman Sharif and also members of the Brown family and 125 Society and other leaders that were in attendance. Regarding Operation Unity, I'd like to just, again, thank Pastor Michael Fisher for his leadership and just the vision in bringing leadership together collectively for prayer. Prayer is extremely powerful and it's just a wonderful way to partner with God on His agenda for us and our communities and as we serve Him. So again, thank you to everyone that participated. I definitely was blessed to be in attendance. And I know that our city is in great hands with our leadership here and also just dwelling together in unity on one accord. And then lastly, it was such a beautiful day to start in the morning with the prayer and then Councilwoman Sharif's event, it was actually several hours later, but they started early just to play music and set the atmosphere with praise and worship. So City Hall was, is definitely a special, special ground on Thursday. And just to hear the praise and worship music was really beautiful and powerful. So honored to be a part of that. I will just lastly give a few updates on COVID-19 and then recap on additional events and provide a few other updates for the community. As of today, the current Los Angeles County COVID-19 confirmed case rate is at 302,700, excuse me, 302,077 residents. There have been 7,027 deaths countywide. In the city of Compton, we have 447 positive cases and 77 deaths. And this is actually a jump of approximately 200 confirmed cases over just the last week alone. So just want to please highlight the, the need to adhere to these safety guidelines, also to utilize our free testing facility available Sunday through Thursday from 7:30 AM to 7:30 PM. They actually will be changing their hours slightly due to daylight savings time being upon us. And so they will be closing slightly early but opening up earlier. And again, it, obviously the virus is very serious. Experts do expect for cases to continue to ramp up and for those that have been following, additional case rates throughout the state and across the nation, there is an uptick in COVID-19 cases. So we definitely need to take this very seriously as we're moving into the colder months so that we can protect our family members. Also, there were questions or statements earlier in public comments regarding parks and other recreation facilities. We are still in the city of Compton, we are not our own nation. We are beholden to the Los Angeles County health guidelines as well as the state health guidelines, which are ultimately governed by the CDC regulations. And so, when we are able to restore full operations, we will do so and, and in alignment with our current budgetary obligations. And so, I know City Management is preparing to restore parks and recreation in a robust way for 2021. We are looking forward to that. I can say myself, I've been meeting with a couple local organizations that already run youth programs in the city of Compton, they are just providing their, their support that they are still here to serve our youth. And so we are definitely working to ensure that people are ready to serve and also provide opportunities for our kids in a, in an even better way. I know it's exciting to have a chance to work on some of our facilities during this downtime, so we are looking forward to additional sports in Compton as well as with better facilities. One of those partners is the PGA, they are currently actually scheduled to do a walkthrough at the end of this week at the Compton Par Three, located in District Four, another hidden gym. They are going to be fully restoring the golf course there as well as providing additional programming year-round, equipment, shoes, golf clubs, all of the equipment is necessary. They'll also be working directly with local trainers to also train our children. They're also working with Compton Unified School District right now to actually provide the foundation to give golf as a CIF program. So, we are still working actively on recreational opportunities and they also are committed to working to install a learning classroom at the Par Three. So there's work being done, they actually will get started. Their schedule is for December, and so they are looking forward to doing some soil samples so that they can custom, customize their treatment for our golf course and really get it up to the level that our residents deserve. So, that's a great update on golf. I know that the Dodgers is still working on their project. We can look forward to additional update from them about the work happening at the Jackie Robinson Stadium as well as other organizations we are in contact with that are also looking to have a greater footprint in Compton with sports. So recreation is alive and well in Compton and we're preparing for our reopening. Also, I'd like to just thank the, yes, the Wild Horse Foundation, they have partnered with us on many events since COVID has started, as well as the Laura King and the Rodney King Foundation, Megasi Five Fraternity, our own local servant Senator Isidore Hall, retired, was also in attendance and there serving. We had our city management team, General Services was there. It was just a great event. And what touched me the most was seeing those young ladies that actually received a multi-year scholarship for entering into the medicine field. And one young lady in particular, I had the chance of watching her just grow up over the years and now she is a senior at King grew. When I first met her, she was probably in middle school, but good to see our community thriving and people continuing to push forward. And also, just a reminder, just to take advantage of the ballot drop boxes, I'm really excited about the, the level of turnout and interest of Compton residents. As I walked throughout the community earlier, I've been stopped twice by people looking for the, the closest polling place. So people are out voting, ensuring that their ballots are dropped off. And just a reminder, the closest ballot to us is Compton Library, just adjacent to City Hall, as well as Luthers Park is a voting center. There's also a voting center at East Rancho Dominguez Library, and these boxes are open 24 hours a day as well as Holy Chapel. Holy Chapel is a voting location, so you are able to actually vote there as well. And polls are also open at Compton College and you can also confirm your additional locations just by visiting lavote.net. And we have also received different inquiries regarding the Compton Pledge and I am welcoming people to please visit their website at comptonpledge.org. And there was a few, excuse me, there was a couple of questions this evening regarding selection. And so as I stated last week, we will not be selecting program participants. This is actually a study that has very specific guidelines in order for the data to be protected and usable for greater policy work. And so, all of the selections will be completely random. And for those people that want additional detailed information, we can also set up just a community briefing and we'll be happy to share more details. There are members of the advisory group from different community organizations that have been briefed in more detail just about the structure of the study, but if there is an interest, I will be happy to schedule an information session at everyone's convenience as well. And just would like, I would like to lastly request that we could have a meeting with the Sheriff's Department regarding just enforcement priorities. I know that many instances regarding just cleanliness, quality of life, code enforcement issues and violations, illegal parking and other infractions, it will be helpful to just have alignment with the Sheriff's Department and code enforcement on these issues. Obviously, they are armed with law enforcement in Compton and I believe the city of Compton should have some input on how they utilize those resources. And in addition, just be able to address the instances where residents are calling and they may not receive response or if it's, I've received several complaints directly that there's reports from the Sheriff's Department of quality of life issues are not their priority and so they don't want to address them. So I'd like us to be able to work collaboratively to figure out how we can best serve the residents that obviously pay their taxes to the city of Compton ultimately, which are funding the Sheriff's Department in Compton. City Manager, could you coordinate something perhaps with Captain Clark and the entire council? I think we all should weigh in on what our expectations are.
Yes, Madam Mayor. And there was another request for me to schedule a meeting with Captain Clark. She is out on a scheduled leave and as soon as she's, as soon as she returns, we'll schedule those meetings.
Okay.
Let me see.
Also, I received a note from Madam City Clerk that we must congratulate the LA Dodgers, they are now world champions, so congratulations.
They won?
They won.
Don't you see the fireworks? You know, can I say this? Madam Mayor, I was just getting ready to access, I mean, I'm sitting here and I'm looking out of my window. Fireworks is just, just going up. I'm like, wait a minute, it sound like the Fourth of July outside. And so that's what it's all about, because I was gonna ask, Craig, I was gonna ask the City Manager, Mr. City Manager, why are these people out here with all these fireworks? But now.
I thought, I knew you were gonna announce it, Madam Mayor. But it's fireworks everywhere.
I mean, all over. I mean, it's, I mean, I can see it from here, really, I mean, they, it's just going up. Yeah, so everybody is excited. So that's what this excitement is about, they won the championship. Okay, all right, congratulations.
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk.
Yes.
Madam Mayor and Council, Captain Clark scheduled to return on Friday, so I'll schedule meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Forward to that. Thank you. May we have a motion to adjourn?
A move?
Second.
Can you hear me?
Oh, we can't, that would be Councilwoman Tana McCoy.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ms. Sharif.
Yes.
And myself, Mayor Brown. Thank you all and we will see you next week.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. After 32 years, they won.